All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, June 7th, Meeting of the Mayor and Council. Thanks y'all for being here. We've got some great guests tonight and a good program, so looking forward to it. We have tonight with us Pastor Shell Osman with Life Church Assembly of God, 4100 King Springs Road. I'd like to invite you up for the invocation and pledge. Everybody, please rise.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
You're to bow your heads with me at this time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for another day that you've given to us. Help us to make the most of it. Lord, I pray and we pray collectively for our mayor and council, as they will be doing the business of the city tonight, that you would lead, guide, and direct and provide in every way, so that each decision would be ultimately for the betterment of this great community. We know that's their desire, and also that it would bring glory to your name some way. Thank you for an incredible city like Smyrna, in which we can work, play, worship, and just have a great time, and be together as this wonderful community that you have created here. We thank you for it, and we give you praise for it. Father, while some would offer their prayer in another name, it's my honor tonight to offer my prayer in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ. And oh, by the way, if possible, would you help the Braves win the World Series? Amen.
I just thought I'd throw that in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Pastor, thanks for being with us, and thanks for all you do for the community, particularly our public safety personnel. We really appreciate you. All right, item two is agenda changes, and we have one tonight. We're going to take item F off of the consent agenda, and dealing with work hours at Campbell, and we're going to move that to be item H on under formal business. So we'll get to that. So I guess I need a motion for the agenda change in a second, please. Moved by Mr. Pickens, seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Thank you. It's nice to be in here without the dividers. We met upstairs. We hadn't done that in a long time. Finally getting back to normal, so great. The mayoral report, the first thing that I have, I'm so pleased to have the Rhine Park Girls Eight and Under softball team, the Survivors, with us tonight. And these are 11 girls ages seven and eight, out of Rhine Park in Smyrna. One of the players, Delaney McDonald, suggested that the team name, suggested the team name based on their pink jersey colors, and in honor of her mom who battled and beat breast cancer. The team and parents rallied around the idea and dedicated their spring 2021 season to breast cancer awareness. Each family donated $1 for every run scored by the girls throughout the season, and in the season, they all, they scored a total of 176 runs. And that wasn't all. The Atlanta Braves recognized the survivors' efforts during Breast Cancer Awareness Day at Truist Park, and matched player and fan donations at 100%. So the total donations to breast cancer research from this little girl's team right here, $31,443, which is awesome. We are so proud of y'all, and we're going to play that video. I think we've got that queued up, that they played at the, at the Truist Park at the Braves game, to recognize y'all.
Happy Mother's Day to all the moms in attendance. The Atlanta Braves are honored to have all the moms here tonight, who came to spend the evening of their special day at the ballpark. We hope you make some great memories with your family and friends. Alongside Mother's Day, the Braves want to bring awareness to a disease that affects one in every eight women in the United States. As of this year, breast cancer has become the most common cancer globally, accounting for 12% of all new annual cancer cases. The Atlanta Braves, along with Wellstar Health Systems and Kroger, hope to highlight this dreadful disease and help to find a cure. Please direct your attention to Braves Vision for a true story of hope and restoration in our community.
Rhine Park is Cobb County Park in Smyrna, Georgia. There's Rhine Park Girls Softball Association. It's been there for a number of years. So the team colors were decided. Our, our team was pink, and so, which is a unique color. We don't normally do that. And after probably our second practice, we sat down and started discussing team name options. So all the kids were throwing out names. They were fun names, exciting names. And then one of the last options that came up was from one girl named Delaney, and she suggested that we are called the Survivors for Breast Cancer Awareness.
My mom had breast cancer, and I found out our jerseys were pink. So I thought the Survivors would be a good name, because breast cancer's color is pretty much pink.
Instantly, every kid on the team, and these kids are seven, eight years old, you know, all got excited about it, the parents included. And it was immediately evident that that was what it should be.
I was in shock, because I'm used to team names being like sparkly unicorns and things like that. So when she told me, I was surprised that she came up with the idea. And then I was also surprised that the team was on board with it, and all the girls and the parents just jumped on board, and it was so touching. And it was surreal.
Simultaneously, another team parent decided, what if we donated money? What if for every run we scored, we donated dollar per family to breast cancer research? So that stuck, and since then, we've now scored more runs than any team in the league at all age divisions.
It's been a substantial amount that we've been able to raise, and, you know, going to a very good cause. So I'm just thrilled that everybody was on board with this.
The family are big Braves fans. They have participated in past Breast Cancer Awareness Days here at Truist Park, back when she was still going through treatment. I had never met them at the time, but it was kind of neat to learn about their journey, and then kind of connect the dots about them being big Braves fans. And as, you know, the Braves were looking at opportunities, we felt that this was a great opportunity to showcase something that the youth in our community is doing.
To have support from the organization is just amazing. They do a lot for the community, but when it affects you directly, it's humbling. And to think it all started just because of Delaney's idea is just something that will stay with us forever.
Fans, for every run the eight U Survivors bring in this season, each parent donates a dollar for cancer research. They are currently over $1,000 and counting. You can join the eight U Survivors in raising funds for breast cancer research by donating to the Atlanta Braves Foundation today. All fan donations, along with the money raised by the team, will be matched by the foundation 100%. Head to Braves.com/give and click Donate Now. Please welcome to the field, cancer survivor Melissa McDonald, with the Rhine Park Girls eight U team, the Survivors, who are holding the pink ribbon in recognition of all the breast cancer fighters and survivors in Braves country. Thank you for your contribution to fighting cancer and bringing hope into our communities.
Y'all, we have such a great community here, and what y'all did showcases that, how great it is to be in Smyrna, and what we do for each other and our community. I'm gonna call up all the girls and the coaches now, and I'm gonna read their names. It's Grace Bryant, Braylon Edwards, Alexa Gennarowal, Brooklyn Gorman, Delaney McDonald, Sidney Mosby, Amy Schmidt, Madeline Tinnell, and I know she's called Maddie, Meredith Oll, Kalen KK Usher, and Anna Lynn Woods. Can y'all come up? I'd like to invite the coaches, Jeffrey Schmidt, Sean Tinnell, Jason Gorman, Josh Woods, and Jonathan Edwards. And I'd invite Coach, if you'd like to say a few words on behalf of the girls.
Yeah, absolutely. Should I do this here?
Sure.
Okay. On behalf of this amazing group of girls, and I'm gonna get choked up, because this is so cool to me, that these sweet little girls. I do this every time. This is a softball team. We play softball, but I tell you what, the fact that Melissa, you know, and Delaney opened up and, and kind of shared that story, you know, it was, it was amazing that, you know, they allowed us to rally behind them, rally behind a big cause, and the fact that, that someone, you know, this young, you know, is affected by this disease, you know, and that these kids can understand that, and, and know that what they're doing, what they did this season meant more than just the wins or the losses. And we won a lot of games, let me tell you. All right? We won, we were our, we were the eight U champions for Rhine Park.
176 runs, you ought to be.
So, we're proud of these kids. But no, I want to thank you, Mayor Norton. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you, Council. This is an incredible honor for these girls that they will never forget, that this year, this season meant so much. Our coaches, we thank you as well. This, this is truly special, something we won't forget ever. And I do have to say, we brought you something, Mayor, because we went to the Braves game, and when you, when you go to a Braves game, everyone wants the autographs of the Braves players. So instead, we got you the autographs of all of these little amazing players.
Oh, that's better than anything. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Tell you what, I'm gonna come.
And we have some pins, city of Smyrna pins for y'all. Jennifer, where do you want us for a picture? Where's Beth?
We can do it right here.
Right here? Okay, let me get in behind you all.
We're gonna put them up here. Everybody smile on one, two, three.
All right. All right. Next on our mayoral report is our proclamation and recognition of Pride Month. You know, we, we have such an awesome city here in Smyrna, as we just showed. What a great thing. What makes us great is our people, and the diversity of our people. And in Smyrna, we welcome and appreciate and include all of our citizens. And I was approached, gosh, probably about six weeks ago, by Mike Mitchell, who's here in the audience. And Mike, come on up. You've done a lot of work. I want to recognize you. He, he wanted to recognize Pride Month, and his idea was to put a, put together a group that would reach out to businesses and ask them to display the pride flag on a, on a day in June to recognize Pride Month, to help our LGBTQ community, and raise awareness, and recognize them. I think we've got over 20 businesses that are set on June 26th-
Correct.
-to display the flag, which includes almost all of them in the downtown district I saw.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And I know that that, that was you doing a lot of work with two others, Kersey McCray and Zach Smith, who I understand weren't able to make it tonight. But all those businesses will be displaying flags-
They will.
...in recognition of Pride Month. And we have a proclamation. I'm gonna ask Mr. Tim Gould, our mayor pro temp, to read that, and then I would like to hear from you with all the things you've been doing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mike, for doing this. It's, it's an important thing for our community, and it's my, my great pleasure to read this, read this proclamation. "A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of LGBTQ Pride Month, June 2021. Whereas the city of Smyrna cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas, all are welcome in the city of Smyrna to live, work, and play. And every family in any shape deserves a place to call home, where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas, the city of Smyrna denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas, Pride Month began in June of 1969 in response to discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, the city of Smyrna appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the LGBTQ community. And whereas, it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas, despite being marginalized, LGBTQ people continue to celebrate authentic acceptance and love. Now, therefore, I, Derek Norton, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2020, 21, as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Smyrna, and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ community, and actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause a seal the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this, the seventh day of June, in the year of our Lord, 2021. Derek Norton, Mayor."
Come down and get a picture, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, let's, thank you, Mr. Gould. You know, Mike, you've, you've been, in addition to going and visiting all the businesses, I know that there's a Smyrna Facebook page called Smyrna is Fabulous. I've seen t-shirts-
Sir?
...and high energy. So tell us what you've been doing.
So, Mayor, Council, a lot of you know me. My name is Mike Mitchell. I have a lot of names around here. I'm the guy who lives off Church Street. I'm the guy who crawls home from Atkins Park. I'm Big Gay Mike. But you know what? The most important thing is in Smyrna, I'm Mike Mitchell, and that is okay. I think it's awesome that we're talking about colors tonight. My favorite thing, other than coffee, is colors. And let me tell you why. Because no color is the same as the other color. We're all different. I moved to Smyrna because I wanted to resell my house and make a lot of money. And I was gonna hide in my house for the five years that I thought it would take to happen. But I started meeting my neighbors, and I realized that no one cared. No one cared who I loved. No one cared. They cared that I was Mike. I was having a conversation the other night with some friends, and they said, I think it's cool that you have a month. Mike Mitchell doesn't need a month. For those of you who know me, I walk out my door every day, and I say, this is me, and damn it, you either like it or you don't, but this is me. This month is for everybody else. So what I decided to do is I reached out to Derek, and I said, I want the businesses of Smyrna to be able to show their support for our community. And whether you want me to or not, I'm gonna go to every single business that I can, and I'm gonna ask them to hang the gay pride, gay pride flag that I'm providing to them. Luckily, P flag gave them to us. And we've had 20 businesses say, yes, absolutely. Can I have more than one flag? And then someone said, we need t-shirts. And it's turned into this thing. Our Facebook group almost doubles in size every day. All those people don't live in Smyrna. They're excited that Smyrna has said in a resounding large voice, yes, we affirm those people who are different. And we know those differences make us strong. So, that Smyrna is fabulous. I expect to see every one of you on June 26th, out there, enjoying our businesses, enjoying these visitors who are coming into our community. I would love to give you something signed. What I'm doing is I'm making your businesses happy, because there are over 300 people who've seen the Facebook invitation. They've shared it with more than 3,000 people. This is a big deal. Thank you for proclaiming this month. For those people who are just a little bit different than everyone else, because you know what? Smyrna is fabulous, and we're the reason it's fabulous. So thank you. From the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Appreciate you very much for everything you've done. Really, really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
All of us done, all of us done, sorry.
So we can send it to you and get it signed by you.
Okay, nice. All right. No, no, thank you very much. I appreciate it. You're welcome.
All right, couple other things on the mayoral report. Y'all may have seen, over the last few days, we talked about on Thursday in our committee meeting, a proposal, about a proposal to open up the downtown, mainly where the fountain is in front of the library, to eliminate the roundabout, add a park in the green space between the community center and Atlanta Road, along with a new brewery coming in town, and a parking facility just north of there. By and large, I've got all kinds of traffic on social media and emails, a lot of positive response, a lot of good criticism and good ideas. Tomorrow at 5:30 at the community center, we're gonna present this plan. Our engineers are coming. A lot of the council will be there. I'll be there and answer any questions and get input that y'all have. And then we're gonna do another one a week from tonight at 6:30 at the community center. So anybody that can't come tomorrow, or hasn't had an opportunity to see it or ask any questions, you can come next week at 6:30, and that's up on our city website, social media, all of that stuff. So we hope to see you there, to hear what you'd like to do. And I forgot to do something before I did any of this, and that was to recognize one of our state representatives who's in the audience. Eric Allen is here tonight with his family. Thank you for being here, Eric. A lot of the things, a lot of the comments that I got on social media relating to the downtown redo were about, okay, well, what, what are we doing on South Cobb Drive? Or what about the aquatics facility? Or what about the redo of Tollison? Or the splash pad down in Ward 7? What, you know, all these things that we have planned. And I'm just gonna say, we're, we're working on all of those things, and my state of the city is on July 28th. That's a Wednesday. We're gonna do it at 6:00 PM in the big gym at the community center. I'm doing it in the evening, so that everybody has a chance to get there. In the past, this has been done at noon, you know, hardly, you know, maybe can't get there. We're gonna stream it online. We're gonna have a recording of it available to y'all. I want everybody to, to have a chance to see what we're doing, and then ask any questions that they have. So more to come about six, seven weeks from today. And then tomorrow at 7:00 PM, after we have the public input session on the downtown, we have a Zoom with Louis Wheaton and Ward 7 on the 30126 zip code. One of our priorities coming into office was to make sure that Ward 7 felt more connected, that we addressed, that we addressed that zip code issue that's been hanging over us for a long time, and had an actual Smyrna address. And we've worked out a deal with the tax commissioner and with realtors that we're gonna be talking about, that should add not only connectivity, but increased property values there. So we're excited about what we've been able to do, and our staff, Penny Round has been, or Penny Mashery now, I know her by her maiden name, she's done a great job putting all that together. So with that, that concludes the mayoral report, and we'll move on to item four, land issues, zonings, annexations. We, we have six or seven annexations tonight. We made a decision as council that I think we're regretting.
Variances.
What's that? What did I say?
Annexation.
Oh, not annexation, sorry. Sorry, Travis, I was still twitching from annexation. Sorry, variances. We have seven variances, and we had them in the license and variance board before, and we've moved them to council, thinking that that would make it easier for residents, and that we would have a more seamless process. And that has not been the case, and we're able to admit that we made a mistake, and we're gonna fix that next month and move them back to the license and variance board. But for tonight, we'll go through these and have all the public hearings and do what we need to do. So item A, 2021-214, is public hearing, variance 21-047, allow six-foot wooden fence in the front yard on a corner lot, landlot 311, 360 Havilon Way, Sarah Brodley and Caldwell Smith. Mr. Martin, background.
Yes, the applicant is requesting to increase the fence height along a right-of-way from four feet to six feet in height. They have an existing six-foot tall fence that is 23 feet off the, off the right-of-way line. They are a corner house at the corner of Havilland and Concord Road. They'd like to move their six-foot fence from the existing location to within three feet of the, of the right-of-way. The city engineers reviewed the, the fence location, doesn't believe there's any sightline conflicts. Staff is recommending approval of the requested variance with three conditions. The first being approval based on the site plan submitted, two, that they perform a, a survey to identify the property lines of the fences located on their property, and three, if any part of the fence falls within the city right-of-way, and the city must work, work within that area, the fence must, and may be required to be removed, it'll be at the owner's expense. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions of Rusty? All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody here to speak for or against this item, please come up and be sworn in by our city attorney now. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. This is in Ward 4, and we'll turn it over to Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4A 2021-214.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, That's approved 7-0. Thank you. Items B and C are the same property, so we're gonna do those together. B is 2021-215, public hearing, variance 21-048, allow second accessory structure, landlot 451 at 995 McLendon Avenue, Sam Whited. And then we have item C is variance 21- And then we have item C is variance 21-049. Reduce street-side setback from 23.3 feet to 15 feet, landlot 451 at 995 McLendon Avenue. Rusty?
Yes, Mr. Whited had come in a few months ago and got approval for a variance to construct his detached garage on the end of his existing driveway. During that variance process, he had an existing shed. Part of the approval was to remove that shed. Mr. Whited has tried to give the shed away, tried to, you know, sell it, and hasn't been able to do it to this point. So he's requesting to come back and just maintain the shed for his tools and lawn equipment and leave the garage specifically for his cars. In addition, there's a setback reduction for the garage he just built from 23 feet down to 15 feet. The location of the garage is where it's always planned to be. There was miscommunication and misunderstanding as to where we were measuring our setbacks. Mr. Whited was measuring from the back of curb and not from the property line. And we take our setbacks from the property line to the structure. We still would have recommended approval either way, or recommended approval of that variance either way. So, we're just coming back to you guys to rectify that issue. We're recommending approval of both the variances to have the second accessory structure and the reduction in setback.
Thank you, Rusty. Any questions? Rusty? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody who'd like to make comment for or against item B and C, please come forward and be sworn in by our city attorney. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. This is in Ward 3. I turn it over to Councilman Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion due pass as previously read and presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0, thank you. Item D, 2021-217, public hearing, variance 21-050. Parking reduction from 23 spaces to 12 spaces in landlot 413, 3300 South Cobb Drive. Axis Infrastructure LLC. Rusty?
Yes, I think this variance is gonna make probably a lot of people happy on South Cobb Drive in the morning. The Dunkin' Donuts at the corner of Concord Road in South Cobb Drive is doing a complete interior renovation. And along with that, they are moving their drive-through window from the north side of the building to the south side of the building to create some additional stacking length for the cars. When they do this as well, they're gonna have to remove three existing parking spaces. They have a total of 16 parking spaces out there today. I'm sorry, they're gonna remove four parking spaces. They have 16 parking spaces today. They'll be going down to 12. Majority of their other businesses through the drive-up window. We need them to remove the three parking spaces on the side to be able to create access for fire access and the truck around the building. So, staff is recommending approval of the requested variance as presented to you guys.
Thank you. Any questions of Rusty? I agree, that's gonna be a big improvement so that cars waiting in that line aren't coming out on South Cobb Drive. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody to speak for or against this item, please come forward to be sworn in.
I do.
If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Luke Wimmatt, Axis Infrastructure, 1111 Cambridge Square, Alpharetta, Georgia. Thank you, Mr. Martin. I think you hit on a lot of good points. The owner, developer of the property is making a lot of significant improvements to the building and the site for this project, including, as Mr. Martin mentioned, moving the drive-through window from the north side to the south side of the building to provide more stacking and better circulation of vehicles around the site and the building. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious. On the south side of that building, there's an existing structure that kind of overhangs that drive. Is that gonna be torn down, or?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
Yep.
So the cars entering into the drive-through will come from the back of the building, come through that entrance?
They will, yeah. And then there's room provided around where the drive-through currently is on that north side of the building for cars to continue to stack kind of around the building as well.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
This is in, this is, who's Ward? This is in Corky's Ward, right? Is that correct?
We'll go over the map later.
It's in Mr. Lindley's Ward. I'm sorry, it's not on there. My fault. Yes, it is, Ward 3. Mr. Lindley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for correcting me.
And thanks to the folks there at the business. We appreciate you upgrading and excited to hear it'll have some wrap around the building. With that, motion to approve as previously read and reported.
Have a motion by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0, thank you. Items E and F are at the same address, so we'll put those together as well. E is 2021-218, variance 21-051. Side setback reduction from 10 feet to four feet for an accessory structure, landlot 489, 2631 Brown Circle, Zoe Bailey. And then F is 2021-219, V21-052. Driveway setback reduction from five feet to one foot, landlot 489 at 2631 Brown Circle. Both of these are public hearings. We'll turn it over to Rusty.
Yes, sir. The applicant is proposing to build a 10-by-12 shed, 120 square feet, on the north side of their home, just off the existing driveway. That driveway is currently concrete with a portion of it being gravelled area. They're proposing to eliminate the gravelled area, which currently goes up to one foot of the property line and replace it with concrete. And then they'll have the shed on the edge of that. They're looking to locate the shed in this location so they don't have to tear up a dry riverbed that deals with their stormwater for their site. Staff's reviewed the request. We're recommending approval with the condition that it's built according to the site plan that they've submitted. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions of Rusty? This is in Ward 3. Susan, do you have any questions? Sorry, inside joke. All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody who wishes to speak for or against this item, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we will turn it over to Councilman Lindley, who represents Ward 3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve is presented.
Have a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0, thank you. And our last one of these is item G, 2021-11. Approval of a code amendment, section 503A of the city zoning ordinance to address front yard fencing. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Department recently received a request from a resident for an interpretation of the city's fencing ordinance with respect to fencing in the front yard. The resident was concerned about wirebacking on split-rail fencing and thought it was prohibited per the city code. The Community Development Department reviewed the fencing ordinance and found it to be silent on this specific issue. Community Development has reviewed the city zoning ordinance with respect to fencing and is proposing code amendments to address wirebacking on split-rail fences in the front yard. The proposed amendments include: One, provide clarification on the use of wirebacking on split-rail fencing in the front yard. And two, remove vinyl as acceptable material for fencing in the front yard. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed code amendments.
Rusty, anything to add?
No, sir. I think Mr. Bennett summed it up pretty well.
Okay, any questions? Rusty? All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak for or against this, please come forward and be sworn in. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we will turn it over to Mr. Lindley to handle this, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the city administrator and Mr. Martin. This came from one of my neighborhoods, and I think it's a good upgrade. Reasonable and fair. So with that, motion to pass and adopt as previously read and reported.
Have a motion by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. Let's approve 7-0. Item H, ordinance 2021-12, public hearing. Approval of a code amendment to section 6-62A of the city's alcoholic beverage ordinance with regards to Sunday sales. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you. The Community Development and Economic Development Departments received a question from one of our local owners of a growler store in the Market Village regarding the ability to sell alcohol by the drink on Sundays starting at 11:00 AM in accordance with the city's Sunday sales requirements. The city has started hosting the Handmade Market on Sundays from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM from May 16th to October 17th. The market has been successful and is drawing a great crowd. Our local business would like to add to the market by providing marketgoers the opportunity to purchase drinks and walk around the market. Business holds a package license for beer and wine, a Sunday package sales license, and a growler specialty shop add-on license. The growler specialty shop add-on license allows this business to sell beer and wine by the drink. In addition to their package license provided, the revenue generated from the pouring sales is less than 25% of the total revenue for the business. Are currently allowed to sell by the drink at 12:30 PM on Sundays. Wine specialty shops, growler specialty shops, cigar specialty shops, and breweries are all excluded from the ability to start selling drinks from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM per section 662A of the Alcohol Beverage Ordinance. Community Development and Economic Development have reviewed the city's alcohol beverage ordinance and are proposing a code amendment to address the issue.
Any discussion, any questions? From what I understand, and I've been down once, the handmade market has been wildly successful, and some of the merchants down there have said that their business has increased 10 times, right? What it was before, so really, really good. And this is just to help Stout Brothers and others down there benefit from that as well.
Question, Mayor. So, is this just through, during the time of the market? Or is this extend even after the time of the market?
No, this will be extending past the market.
Okay, thank you.
Every weekend, they'll be allowed to do that.
Any other questions? All right, we will turn this over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at the handmade market this weekend. It was crowded, and business is good there. So we look forward to, I guess, even more vendors getting there in the near future. With that, Mr. Mayor, move to approve item 4H as previously read.
Have a motion by Mr. Gould, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, okay, sorry. Before we vote, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak for or against this item? Please come forward now and be sworn in. Thanks for catching that, Scott. I thought I made it through all those. I just can't remember the public hearing. Seeing none, we will close it and go forward with our vote. It's approved 7-0, thank you. Shows that Mr. Cochran's not sleeping through these meetings. Thanks for being alert. Item 5 is prove his licenses. Item, we don't have any. The item 6 is formal business. 6A, 2021-212, is adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget. Mr. Bennett, any background, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The public hearing for the FY, fiscal year 2022 proposed budget was held on May 17th, 2021. The total budget as proposed is $110,205,348. The general fund budget is $55,491,625. Special revenue funds are $6,321,526. Capital project funds are $23,488,029. Internal service fund is $1,248,000. And the enterprise funds are $23,656,168. For comparative purposes, the total revised fiscal year 2021 budget to date is $113,342,785. The general fund budget is $53,598,327. Special revenue funds are $9,081,435. Capital project funds are $26,013,114. Internal service fund is $1,331,463. And the enterprise funds are $23,318,447. Staff recommends adoption of the FY 2022 budget as presented.
Any questions or comments from the council? I'll just say, the staff has done a tremendous job landing this. Your first time going through this in that role, when you've done a really good job. Kristen do a good job, as always. Put a lot of work into this. They did the public hearing. They presented it to us in committee meeting and in council. And if there's no further discussion, I'll turn it over to our budget chair, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was expecting a full report, but...
Is that why you wore the tie, Landon?
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6A, adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget as previously summarized by the city manager.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0, thank you. Is it okay, Kristen, to announce the rating? Or is it too early for that? It's on their website. Okay, well, we've just been given a AAA, renewed AAA bond rating again. So thanks for all you do, and we'll continue to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Item B, 2021-05, approval of the professional services agreement between the City of Smyrna and Crowe Engineering for the Smyrna 2022 SPOS program management, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you. Crowe Engineering is currently our program manager for the 2016 SPOS. This agreement extends the professional services of Crowe Engineering to provide program management for the City of Smyrna 2022 SPOS. Staff has reviewed the agreement and has been satisfied with Crowe Engineering in their management of the 2016 SPOS and recommends approval of the professional services agreement between the City of Smyrna and Crowe Engineering for the 2022 SPOS.
Any questions, comments from council? All right, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6B, CON 2021-05 as presented.
Have a motion, seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Appreciate you, Greg and Adam, being here tonight, and thanks for all you do for us. Item C, approval of the Cobb County Department of Transportation Amendment to the Cobb Framework Agreement. Amendment number one, which is project number X2402, changes the total Cobb County contribution to the Windy Hill Project from $18 million to $23 million in SPOS 2016 funds, an increase of $5 million, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Windy Hill Boulevard Project is a joint project between the city and Cobb County. This amendment reallocates the sums paid by each party so that Cobb County pays up to $23 million in expenses related to the project.
And I'll say, this is, I wanna say thank you to the Cobb County Commission and Chairwoman Cupid for working with us on this. As the cost of that project has gone up, they added, since it's a true joint project, they added from their side. And that was from a lot of work done by a lot of this council and Scott Cochran. So appreciate them, appreciate everybody involved. I'll turn it over to our budget chair, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you again. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6C, CON 2021-06 as presented.
Have a motion, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0, thank you. Next few are appointments. Item D, 2021-206. Item D, 2021-206, Approval of Appointment of Ward Two Resident Darby Wayland to the Parks and Recreation Commission to fulfill term to expire December 2021. Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, excited to have Darby fill this role. So with that, I'll move to approve the item as previously read.
Motion, and seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item E, 2021-207, Approval of Appointment of Ward Two Resident Kinsley Hardwick to the Smyrna Tree Board to fulfill the term to expire August 2024. Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, in the same way, excited to have Kinsley fill out this position on the tree board. So with that, I'll move to approve the item as previously read.
It's seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item F, 2021-236, Approval of Appointment of Ward Four Resident Doug Godbold to the Smyrna Housing Authority to fulfill the term to expire May 31st, 2025. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 6F, 2021-236, to appoint Doug Godbold to the Smyrna Housing Authority.
Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item G, 2021-226, Approval of Appointment of Human Resources Director Carol Sickard as the interim Civil Service Board Clerk until an upcoming Human Resources Manager is hired and can be appointed. Mr. Bennett, the background.
Yes, sir. By job description, the Human Resources Manager serves as a Civil Service Board Clerk. The Human Resources Manager position was vacated on May 28th, 2021. Human Resources Director Carol Sickard will serve as the interim Civil Service Board Clerk until the position of Human Resources Manager is filled.
Any discussion? All right, we'll turn it over to Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. At this time, I want to move to approve Item 6G as previously read.
Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. The next item is the item we added, Item H. This is in Ward Three. It was previously Item F on consent. 2021-231, Approval of the Extension of Work Hours from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Monday through Saturday, and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. from June 7th, 2020 to July 31st, 2021, for Carol Daniel Construction for an interior renovations at Campbell High School. And I believe we wanted to change the times to, from nine to nine on Saturday and eliminate Sunday, correct? Okay. Everybody okay with that change? All right, Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve is previously read.
I have a motion, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. This is to give some residents relief from some of the noise with the renovations at Campbell. And still allow enough time, enough hours in the days to get this done by the time it needs to become school year. Madam Clerk, are we ready? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And let's approve 7-0. Thank you. Item Seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item Eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, MIN 2021-30, Approval of the April 29th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, MIN 2021-36, Approval of the May 13th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item C, MIN 2021-33, Approval of the May 17th, 2021 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item D, MIN 2021-34, Approval of the May 17th, 2021 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item E, 2021-225, Approval of the Smyrna Handmade Market Road Closure to be extended out to King Street due to overwhelming vendor participation for the remainder of the market's scheduled dates. And Item F, move to Item F, 2021-239, Approval to Use Council Chambers for a Joint Ward-Town Hall Meeting for Ward Three and Ward Six on July 18th, 2021 at 5:30 p.m. at AMAX Bacon City Hall located at 2800 King Street Southeast, Smyrna, Georgia 30080.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. That moved by Mr. Gould, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote.
Got to be quicker than that.
Approved 7-0. I've never seen anybody second so many things, Mr. Pickens. Good job. Good job. Thanks for your contributions this evening. Number Nine is Ward and Committee Reports. We'll start tonight with Dr. Lewis Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really good night tonight, really good recognitions tonight as well, really, really exciting things from our community. Just a quick reminder for Ward Seven residents to tune in tomorrow for a town hall at 7:00 related to the 30126 zip code issue. A lot of good stuff going on in the city as well, a lot of other town hall meetings too, so definitely give us your feedback and your thoughts as we move forward, and with that, I yield.
Mr. Tim Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention and thank the Veterans Committee for putting on a great ceremony for Memorial Day this past week, and, or two weeks ago, but it was just, yeah, it was great. It was a really good event, beautiful weather, a lot of folks were there, Georgia National Guard Band, good speakers, so it was a pleasure to be there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's the best one I've seen yet. We had General Carden here, really well attended. That was really well done.
It was good.
Yeah, appreciate all involved. Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to encourage the residents to go to the Smyrna Library website and check out all the activities that are happening at the library. Now that school is out, there are a lot of events taking place. The theme is Tales and Tails. That's fish tales and tells story, the story. So, but there's lots of events for the children and some other things as well for adults. And also, you can go there to check out the Hefty Energy Bag Recycling Program, and you can pick up a free starter kit at the Smyrna Library. In addition to that, I also would like to wish my husband, Doward, a happy birthday. And with that, I yield.
All right, Mr. Welch?
I have no report this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. Lindley?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just thanks to everybody that came out yesterday for our meet and greet for the newly annexed neighborhood between Hawthorne and Windy Hill, and thanks to our great staff for hosting and putting on a great first effort. And yesterday, had the chance to go to the handmade market for the first time. Encourage everybody to get out and support, support that effort. Lot of good stuff there. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pickens, just keep it under 10 minutes, okay?
I'll try, but I was wanting to second more things. So, just one quick thing, the short-term committee, or short-term rental committee will be having a meeting Wednesday morning at 9:00 to go over the draft ordinance, so looking forward to see how that goes.
Mr. Bennett, anything?
No, sir.
You didn't want to introduce your new staff member, Tyler Lewis, to everybody?
I can do that. Mr. Tyler Lewis, would you stand up, please? So Tyler has joined us in administration role to support the city administrator and Assistant City Administrator's office to handle projects. So we welcome Tyler. He's doing a fantastic job, and for that, we're grateful. Thank you.
He's going to be a great addition and really help Joe and Penny get a lot of the work done day to day, so glad to have you. Ms. Cochran? Ms. Heather, Ms. Tina, anybody? Nope, okay. Ten is show cause hearings. We have none. Item Eleven is citizen input. Do we have anybody signed up this evening? Is there anybody who'd like to come forward and speak? I don't even see anybody left. If there's no other business to be brought before this body, we're adjourned at 7:58. Have fun. The game now? Hey, this is awesome.
It is.
I love that. That was really, really cool. Nope, all good, man. Just a new chair. Heather? No, I text her. I hate this chair. I want the, I want the other one. You didn't throw the other one away, did you? Got to find it. This is awful. If you can find the other one, I want it. If you can, then... Which one? Wait, just find me the old one and let me sit in and decide. We were together, we jointly did it. I turned this thing off.